I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ginny, would you please take the role call?
Collins?
Here.
Coyle?
Here.
Iker?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Patrice? Yusef Abramson?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Okay, we will start today with our 207's Best Awards. This month it is for Fine Arts. And if we're ready, we'll start with Maine East. Dr. Pike?
It is an honor to share with you Maine East nominee for 207's Best for this month, Lucy Plankford. Getting to know Lucy this year has been an absolute joy. She adds enthusiasm and creativity to Maine East from the moment she scans into the building each morning. While the focus of this award is her success in fine arts, Lucy shines in the classroom, in the pool, and on various student leadership teams. Lucy has paid the most of her time in high school and we are lucky that she is ours. Lucy fell in love with the arts in elementary school where she became involved in drama and art classes. At Maine East, Lucy has taken advantage of multiple art courses each school year. She also joined the first play her freshman year and has been involved in every single production since. Technical theater is just one of Lucy's passions as an artist. She loves costume design and set creation. You can feel Lucy's excitement when she describes how awesome it is to see a set come to life in weeks. She loves the camaraderie among the technical theater crew and values the feedback and her peers' exchange with each other as they combine ideas to create engaging productions. Lucy shared that fine arts and Maine East are the highlight of her day. She shares her love for photo with many other students as she is the teacher's assistant in the photography studio. When asked about her favorite projects, Lucy declares that it is always the most recent one. She loves to see how her work has evolved over time. Lucy loves that she begins her days in the art suite and feels lucky to end her days in the theater, which she calls her second home. In talking with Lucy's teachers, commitment and personality are two themes that stand out. Ms. Hannah, Lucy's photo teacher, shared that Lucy was in my Photo One class freshman year and she quickly made her mark with her enthusiastic approach to learning, her drive to perfect the art of photography, and her joyful personality. As a senior, she is an AP Photo, AP Art, Digital, and she is a photo TA. She's a natural leader and an inspiration to those around her. Lucy has an incredible eye and experiments with lighting, subject matter, style, and mood, which is what makes her an incredible photographer and artist. Lucy is one of a kind and an exceptional example of a Maine East artist. Ms. Eisenberg shares similar sentiments in teaching Lucy. I've had the great honor to be Lucy's art and photo teacher since her sophomore year. She's a very dedicated NAHHS member for the second year running. Lucy has always come to class filled with creative and positive energy. She is gifted, intelligent, and mindful. Her art is a reflection of her love of the planet and her respect for humanity. She documents her experiences in a very candid way using camera ink or paintbrush. When I look at her art, it's as if she's telling me a personal narrative. Outside of her artistry, Lucy is filled with ideas to make this school and community a better place. She's a natural leader and a simply all-around wonderful, humble person. Ms. Rinaldi, Lucy's counselor, also loves Lucy's passion for art and has had the privilege to see Lucy succeed in other areas as well. She shared that Lucy is one of the most kind, conscientious, and ambitious students I have ever had at my caseload. She is someone who applies herself each day and strives to become better at what she does while always eager to learn new things with infectious enthusiasm due to her positivity. She does very well academically and challenges herself each year with AP and dual credit courses. Lucy is very involved in her school. She participates in Varsey Dive, Varsey Water Polo. She's involved with Technical Theater, NHS, and Polish Club. Outside of school, she is a Polish military scout and a troop leader and is also involved in Polish dance. She's a lifeguard at the Des Plaines Pool during the summer. I have no doubt that she will have a very successful future. Well-rounded is an understatement for this talented artist. Lucy's future definitely includes both art and technical theater. Her dream job for many years has been to be a National Geographic photographer. She loves the wilderness and that is often reflected in her art. For now, Lucy is dedicated to her AP Art sustained investigation titled, "The Environmental Impact of Human Development on Ancient Earth." We are proud of Lucy and look forward to her influence on our fine arts programming for many years to come. Lucy, you want to come up front and share with us? Do you want to share our next students here with you tonight?
Okay, so I'm a whole fender with me. My mom and my dad are here and my siblings, Elizabeth, who's a junior at Maine East, and my brother is a freshman at Maine East.
Nice, thanks so much Lucy. Want to tell us a little bit about your future plans?
Oh yeah.
And I'm pretty much here.
Yeah, I haven't really decided where I want to go for college yet, but I really want to pursue photography. And like you said, I want to try to go into environmental studies or research through National Geographic, or I might want to go into cinematography. So one of those two.
Thank you so much Lucy, congratulations.
Okay, next up for Maine South, Dr. Collins?
Yes, this evening, we are going to honor Olivia Killian. Olivia, would you please come up here while I talk about you and everything awesome that you're doing? When I was talking to Olivia in my office, I said, can you tell me how you got into the arts? And she said, well, I learned how to tie my shoes from tying my ballet shoes. So from the get-go, everything kind of flowed from there. She began dancing in the Park District programs and she worked her way through different studios. Then she began to double bass in fourth grade and she said she held a deep jealousy for the cello section. Who of you in this is not playing cello? So she decided, well heck, I'll play cello. And she did that on her own. In freshman year, she played both instruments and then committed full-time to the cello. And everywhere you look, she's involved in everything that we have going on at the school. She, for the last four years, has been part of the dance company and has been an officer for two years. She's been a member of the winter play and the choreographer for Charlotte's Web in the production of Chicago. She was the dance captain in the dance ensemble. If you've seen the production, you know it's basically a two-hour dance that has music behind it. So she was front and center the entire time in that show. And she's also studied voice lessons in her free time and was in Deced Dulce her freshman year. And she said she loved the community of the two hallways that run parallel to the auditorium for fine arts and how the teachers all work together because of the number of students who share amongst their programs. So I'm going to read a couple of comments from some of your teachers. So Mr. Nix, your orchestra teacher, said, "I have known and worked with Olivia since her first day of school as a freshman in spring orchestra class. Olivia has always been genial, collaborative, patient, and most important, kind. I can always rely on her to make a positive connection with a peer in orchestra class. I can also rely on her to be prepared. As a member of our Maine South Symphony Orchestra, student musicians are often presented with complicated musical material that has many technical and expressive demands on the musician. Olivia can always be trusted to practice her part, come to class prepared, and ask a question when she doesn't understand something completely. She always comes out on the other end of a unit stronger, more confident, and a better musician. She is simply a joy to work with." Olivia's AP Calculus BC teacher, Ms. Beth Anbal, who's here with us this evening, says, "Olivia Killian is a leader. She is a leader in the classroom, in the fine arts wing, and as a peer leader in the school's freshman mentoring program, Hawk Pride. Olivia is charismatic and goes above and beyond the expectations, always. Olivia's wide variety of activities is indicative of how interesting a young lady she is. She has amazing time management skills. It is not unusual to see her working on an assignment between school and dance practice. Regardless of how busy she is outside of the classroom, her assignments were always turned in on time and of the highest quality. Olivia sets priorities and balances her commitments. Olivia will be successful in her future because she is an excellent problem solver. She communicates well and she knows how to set goals and achieve them. Olivia is confident yah-hub-ble. She is successful in the classroom without a trace of arrogance. Olivia advocates for her own learning and would come in after school to ask a question when necessary. She develops and maintains relationships with the faculty and her classmates. As a Hawk Pride leader, Olivia has forged a relationship with a group of 10 freshmen this year and is still close to her freshmen from last year. Her gentle, unassuming nature is a natural draw for people. When talking with Olivia, she gives you rapt attention so that you believe that whatever you are saying is the most important thing to her at the moment. Olivia's discipline, intelligence, and perseverance will enable her to be successful in any field that she chooses." And finally, I'd like to read the comments of your drama teacher, Ms. Carrie Sauer. She said a lot about you. "Olivia has been my student for three years. Over and over again, I have been astounded by her internal motivation. No matter the scope of the task, Olivia is always determined to get every single thing she can possibly commit. Olivia is a student that gives her all in every moment." Another thing that stands out about Olivia is how well-rounded she is. She is exceptionally bright and excels in all of her classes, but I don't know that people realize how incredibly creative she is. Olivia is an actor, a musician, and a dancer. She uses her creative energy to bring joy into the lives of others all the time. Her exceptional talent in all of these areas is equally matched by her work ethic. Olivia is the kind of person others want to work with and she inspires those around her with her example. As a person, Olivia is a gem. In all of my years of teaching, I have rarely encountered a young person with such an incredible capacity for empathy. Olivia is always working to be her best, but she also cares deeply for others for becoming their best too. Olivia is kind, compassionate, thoughtful, and supportive. Her peers light up when they are with her. Simply, Olivia is a wonderful human being. I feel incredibly lucky to have her, to be and have her teacher, and I will always be grateful that her love of theater made our paths cross. Congratulations to you, Olivia. You make me proud to be an educator." And then when I was also getting to know Olivia, I'm sitting there talking about all the fine arts things she does, it's like, oh, by the way, I love science too. So she's a member of the science research program that took place in the summer where she primarily worked with botany and competed at the regional and state level where she earned a gold medal in her research presentation. And her interest in that area is maybe leading her to think that she wants to do that next year. So I'll let you tell us about that, but I just want to say congratulations. We are really going to miss you because you do so many things at our school and you are going to be a rock star. Congratulations. Okay, what are your plans for next year and who is with you this evening?
Um, my parents are with me. Steven and my family are with me. Welcome back. As for next year, as Dr. Collins says, I do love science. So I'm intending on pursuing a major in biochemistry, hopefully on the pre-medison track.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving on to Maine West, Dr. McManus?
Thank you. Selma Bellic is our honorary senior. So if high school is supposed to be a time of discovery, Selma Bellic is doing high school in the best place possible. She has focused on working hard not to achieve her goals in school, but to discover her goals in life. There's so much I still want to explore, she told me. I want to stick to what I love and if it doesn't work, I have a lot of interests. I'll work hard at one of them. I was very impressed with the level of commitment and achievements Selma has accomplished in her pursuits in fine arts, but I was more impressed by her promise. And this is what makes Selma our nominee for 207's Best. It seems to me that Selma's most important achievement her freshman year at Maine West was self-discovery, which is the most impressive kind. She describes herself as a freshman, "I was so timid, mostly quiet." She discovered her strengths as a leader in the fine arts. On tech crew, under the guidance of Mr. McManus, she learned more about herself. I loved what I was learning because it gave me a way to help. She learned that she could make a contribution, which she carried into other activities and clubs at school. Selma, as a senior, is now a drum major in the marching band, playing the flute in the concert season. She's also a stage manager and student producer in tech crew. And on WMTH, she helps produce for you weekly. She's a member of the Thespian Society, Environmental Club, SOAR, Drama Club, Music Appreciation Club, Video Club, and the Anime, Board Game, ASL, and Book Clubs, if you can fit them in. From freshman year timid and shy to senior year busy and happy, Selma explored parts of our school in combinations that few students have ever managed to put together. And she has a plan to continue exploring beyond high school. Passionate about the oceans, Selma asks herself, what if I could find something that hasn't been found to help the earth? The earth isn't doing well. She looks forward to turning 18 so she can apply to be an intern at the shed and teach other people. So dolphins and beluchas and otters and penguins can help her figure out how good a fit this is to make sure marine biology is the field she wants before she devotes the rest of her education to it. So she'll begin at Open, pursuing oceanography and earth science before making a final decision about college or, put another way, she'll give herself more time to explore. This spirit of discovery and service is precisely what makes so many of her teachers love Selma so much. Mr. Elifson, who calls himself lucky to have taught her twice, says, "She exudes joy. She walks into a room and instantly makes everyone's day better. She is thoughtful and deliberate as a student and has a natural passion for learning. Selma possesses a sense of wisdom that is well beyond her years. She is kind and it is a blessing to know her." And Mr. Greenberg, who sponsors at least two or three of those clubs that Selma enjoys, says, "She is one of the most cheering and positive people in the school. She says she's always tired, but she never seems to lack any energy at all. She's a hard worker and people love to be around her." Ms. Kamai, having taught Selma in math, says, "Every day, Selma comes in with an engaging story, is welcoming and warm with me or students around her. When she's frustrated or working through something, I can see the frustration, but she continues to ask questions, says thank you, and keeps trying. It is a pleasure for me to get to know and learn from Selma this year." And Mrs. Reiken, who shares Selma's commitment to environmental science, says, "She is always enthusiastic and kind to everyone. Several of her classmates were also involved in the tech crew and told me that whenever Selma was running the show, they knew things were going smoothly. I attended several shows last year when Selma was stage manager and I noted how there was never a lag in the microphones or other issues that often occur in school productions. I mentioned this to Selma. She blushed and her friends exclaimed, 'That's what they meant! She's the best stage manager.'" It is so exciting to see that a behind-the-scenes student who excels at what she does but hesitates to take the credit and recognition that she deserves is getting recognized. What Selma's teachers see is the dedicated leader that she didn't always believe that she could be. She discovered her true skill when she learned as drum major that true leadership is rooted in kindness. Mr. Kersmeyer, director for four years in her band, Family, has taught them. No matter what, be kind and remember that someone may be caring more than you know. Be respectful of what they do, want, and value. And Selma knows that you can help people be their best selves when they know that you're there to support them. Finding that calling deep within herself is the most important discovery Selma will ever make. And we at West are proud that she will take her kindness and bravery on to help us help our planet. Selma, can you tell us a little bit about who's here with you tonight?
My mom is here with me and I guess I heard from the other students. I want to continue with marine biology, but I also, since I've gotten so into tech, I want to do it as a minor statement, as a minor in college as well. So I have it on the side while it's continuing to pursue in marine biology.
That's great.
Wonderful to hear about all the diversity and diverse interests that these amazing students have. So thank you and congratulations to all of you. At this time, it's an opportunity for you to step outside and have photographs with your parents and your principals. After that, if you'd like to return to the meeting, you can, but you don't need to. So if you want to, go ahead and take photos now, please feel free to do so.
That's very cool. Yeah.
Okay, do, take care. Thank you for coming. Okay, do we have any public comments? I don't think we have any cards. Okay. If not, we're going to get an update from our superintendent.
This thing just worked. Sorry about that. Okay, a couple of things. I know the tech's going to work sooner or later. Couple of things tonight, and unfortunately, principal stepped down. I should have done this before they left.
Do you want me to do mine first? Do you want me to do my board?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll do them when they come back in.
Okay, why don't I do, why don't we go to updates from board members?
Well, let me do number, let me do number two first.
Oh, okay, sure, sure, sure.
Let me do number two first.
I could just come fully back to you.
No, 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 no.
That's all right, okay.
No, no, no. You will notice, board members, tonight, a bag from Kilwin's Chocolate Shop. And that is a small token of our appreciation organized by Virginia Edwards, of course, in recognition of Board Appreciation Day, which is coming up on November the 15th. Said this many, many times, but actually, I would use the current stuff that we're working through, which is to change and grow and improve service to our students. Seems like a really simple thing. You know, do what's right when you know how to do things better. Try to serve all students, do the very best of your ability. Try to uplift every student and enrich every student's life. Seems like a very simple thing to do. It isn't. Because every time that you try to do those kinds of things, what you find out is that the world likes to stay the way that it is. And we are reminded frequently in these days just how much the world wants to stay the way that it is. And people assume that it's some kind of a zero-sum game. It isn't. We don't get to do what we do here as a leadership team in this district. And I say this all the time. I know that some of you know this better than others, but we do not get to do the work that we do on behalf of our students without the quality of the board that we have been privileged to have in this district. Smart, courageous, ethical, doing the right thing in the moment, over and over and over again. That's the reason that we've been recognized for being the district that we are. Plenty of districts around us would love to do the work that we're doing. Plenty of them would. They can't. Because in the face of the world wanting to stay the same, boards often decide we're going to stay the same instead of moving forward and improving service to students. This board has been exceptional at continuing to support us to serve our students better and better each year. And I cannot thank you guys enough. So this is a very small token of our appreciation. I wish we had a roomful of people to give you the standing ovation that you deserve, but I'm going to start with my team in here and say, thank you. So very, very well deserved. I'm going to, yes, you go ahead and jump ahead. I'm going to work on the tech because I actually want the principals back in here.
Okay.
But I do my other.
That's fine. We'll go to updates from board members and I do have one. First of all, thank you for those kind words. Having you all to work with makes our jobs, I think, much easier. I also want to thank Ken for delegating the duty for purchasing any gift to Ginny Edwards. No offense, Ken, but you know, she kind of maxes it out of the park. So thank you also, Ginny. I have a couple of housekeeping things I want to mention to the board. First of all, I want to thank member Iker. He is going to be attending the IASB Delegates Convention for the board and he will be, you know, our representative voting for us on the resolutions. There's a number of resolutions. Ed and I have reviewed all these committee resolutions. I think you guys get them. So if you have any questions, reach out to one of us. We don't have, we're, we are, and I've spoken to Mary and Ken a little bit about some of them. We are not opposed to any of the recommendations that are made. Remember, these are just recommendations that the IASB forwards on, hoping that the legislature might take some of them off. We are in agreement on all of them except one, and that one has to do with, very briefly, firearm sales stores that sell firearms and the location of them with respect to schools. Right now, the law is 500 feet. There's a recommendation from Mundeline High School District 120 to move that to 1500. That seems like a pretty, you know, fair thing to maybe require. They don't want it to be too close. But the Resolutions Committee is recommending that we not adopt that approach. So Ed and I spoke about this and both of us feel that the rationale for that is a little bit, we don't know why they're saying that, why they wouldn't be moving forward on that. There may be a number of good reasons, but they're not really laying them forth. So if it's okay with the board, I'd like to delegate, I'd like our board to delegate to add the ability to listen because they do go through that at the delegates' meeting. They will talk about rationale. And if he hears something very compelling, he could go ahead and agree with it. But if he doesn't, I think our board should vote not in compliance with that recommendation. Is there anybody that has any input or questions on that? Okay?
I was sensitive about concern about that particular issue myself too. And then like President Carla was saying, we do agree with the decisions that we have, what we make.
Yeah, Ed, I know he's really read up on everything and he's looked into it, so he's going to be paying attention. I think he'll do a good job. And he can report back to us if he wants. Okay?
I will.
Well, yeah, maybe not if you want. Report back. I said, not if you want. Definitely report back to us, let us know. Okay, and number two, I want to let you know about a discussion and a decision that I've made. I'll take this one on in consultation with Ken. As you know, for many years, we've sent liaison, board member, to the monthly Education Foundation meetings. Over the years that I've been on the board, sometimes we've had consistent presence. Most recently, I think Terry has been going pretty consistently to those Ed Foundation meetings. Given that they usually occur like the day after our board meeting, it's kind of a time issue for us to have to do our board meeting and the next night, our liaison is going to that meeting as well. The fact that we now have two people from District 207 that are actually going to be in those meetings. Laura Cook is there and Brett is also there. And in addition, Mike Pressler, in his retirement, is now a member of the foundation. So there are a number of people there who can serve that role of communicating what the board is doing, what's happening in District 207. So we are not going to be sending someone monthly to that. We've made that decision. We can try that out and see how it goes. In lieu of that, Ken's going to continue to do his State of the District presentation to the foundation, which will be good. And then I would like to suggest that we have one event, either their fundraiser or some other event where board members are invited just to get to know some of those foundation members at the event. So we'll work on that. So I just want to let you know. Does anybody have any questions on that?
You know what, I'm really happy that you're doing that because what I've noticed over the years is, one, Brett and I wind up repeating some of this stuff because we're, you know, at the same love, you know, same talking about it. And then the other, but the other thing is, I just want to commend them. I've been doing that for, you know, several years now. And actually, this year, I stopped Dean Patrice as was assigned.
Well, he, yes.
Beginning, but anyway, I think it's best that we don't. But they have, it's a different organization now than when I started. I mean, it's phenomenal, the progress that they've made and just the impact that they're having, I think, is a lot different. So having Laura there and I think we have enough representation now. So I feel good about that, even though I love the people. The people are wonderful. So I like the idea of knowing how.
I'm sure they wouldn't mind if any of us want to attend a meeting. I don't think they'd have a problem. I just don't want it to be like, you know, we are requiring someone to be at those meetings.
And especially since it's the day after this meeting. That was hard, but.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for doing that. You've been probably the most consistent in the last maybe 10 years. So thank you for doing that.
Sure.
So that's just a change I wanted to let you know. Does anybody else on the board have an update?
Yes, I have a row announcement regarding, we want to have our international MOU school from South Korea students will be visiting after the COVID and everything. Plan to be visiting in Chicago next year, 2023, and end of January. I believe it will be on about January 23, 24 for about one week or so. So we are very excited to kind of welcome them. Previously, after we did an MOU in 2018, we continued to be in a slow but continuously nice, wonderful relationships, educational relationship. And then I was able to visit the school this summer. And they will be coming for the winter month. So even though Chicago's cold winter month, I kind of proceeded to try to come if they were in the summertime. We have a better seasonal for them to go out and explore. But in Korea, their winter vacation is a more longer time and the students can able to come. So they're planning to come and then I will be share any more updates as soon as I get with the superintendent regarding. And then I'm also excited to share that while I was visiting in the summer, I was able to meet one additional school from South Korea. It's called Tongmyung Women's High School. And they're fantastic. And then their principal is also visiting. So we are planning to share doing an opportunity to a second MOU with one of the schools in Korea. And this will be mutually beneficial for the students and educators as well in the continues to see. So that's when this will happen, when we get the secure days and when we do an MOU. I also would like to invite our board members to join and, you know, as a participating ceremonial event too. So, and then, let's see what else. And also, if when possible. And also, if when possible, it's always been a great experience for students visiting other countries internationally. So I know our students do visit Europe, most of the places, like Italy, Germany, and Spain, maybe other places, too. But when, if opportunity comes, we hope to share with our principals that if any students or any particular club may be interested in visiting Asia or from Korea, we have a places to go. And the kids will really enjoy the opportunity on the building of South Korea, which is one of the top best growing educational systems as well, like President Obama was mentioning numerous times. So if that opportunity may come, we'll be happy to coordinate in such that opportunity as well. So just like to share that information. Thank you.
The board doesn't, the school doesn't sponsor those travels, right? In summer? Okay. So it would just be, you know, kind of serving as a resource if students wanted to. Okay. Thank you, Jen. Thank you very much. Terry?
I have something. So it, you know, I run McCaff, too. So one of the things that I've done with McCaff is that I've had Loyola nursing students come, and they did part of their internship with me on community health. So we talked, did drug prevention, and we do this. Two things. One is, I took them on a tour of Maine East, and unanimously, they said, wow, this is great. It looks like so much fun. People really, the kids look like they really want to be here, and they have teachers that look like they really care. So that was one quote that I was like, wow, that's awesome. But the good thing is, is that we're working on a contract right now for them, for Loyola students, to come to 207. And then Loyola is drafting their, their contract. And then I've talked with Sean about this in terms of, it's a win-win situation for our kids, because they, the kids were invited to come to the CTE classroom to talk about nursing and medical careers. So that was one thing. And then the other thing is that students here, because it's Loyola nursing school, that's something that, you know, that it's, it's a good kind of input into there for kids who are interested in nursing. So I just want to let you know that's coming down the pike, and I feel really happy about it, because it's something that is going to be a positive situation. And thank you for, all of you for letting us do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. We'll go back to, you ready?
Yeah, yeah, I'm ready. I just want to, since Terry was speaking, I want to just acknowledge that after speaking with the cabinet members and having the issue raised by Member Iker and also President Owen, we are going to try to do some marketing around the issue of fentanyl that is kind of really become an insidious problem around the country. And unfortunately, the data on this is just really problematic in that, like literally the first dose of this, taking in something you don't even know it's there can be lethal. And we've got plenty of examples of that. So we are going to be trying to work with Terry and McCaff, which is a perfect vehicle to do that, to do some marketing campaign in the building. Secondly, principals, we waited for you guys to come back. We were supposed to do this in October, but you were attending another event. So we pushed this off to this month so that we could do a principal appreciation. And I'm sorry you missed the, what I said about our board members, because it matters to the work that all of us do. But I just want to acknowledge publicly that the work that our three principals are doing right now, and I know that Melissa's new and stepped in to East, where we've had tremendous principal leadership. But Ben, and Eileen, and Melissa, I think the work that's happening right now in our three high schools is as good as it's ever been. In fact, it's the best it's ever been. Having watched Ben and Eileen in particular navigate through the last few years during the pandemic, take care of students, take care of staff, and I'm going to note just one piece of information. But across the board, where districts around us actually took steps backwards in terms of moving forward in service to students, we actually made tremendous gains in some really important areas. I've noted those publicly here before, but in particular, you know, the career experiences we've been able to get. We've continued to grow exponentially in the number of college courses that our students take. And then I've got a few other things to share here. But that's due to the incredibly strong leadership we've had at the principal level in all of our buildings. Having been here 18 years and watched sort of the long arc of this work, it gives me a lot of just really satisfaction to see how well-run our buildings are and just how much we've continued to move forward. So principals, on behalf of the board and the rest of our team, Mary does want to know when Assistant Superintendent Appreciation Month is, but we'll come back to that. But I just want to say, guys, thank you seriously so much for the work that you do in service of our students. And we could not be the district we are without the three of you. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
They got a standing ovation for you. That's how it works. Okay. And with that, I'm going to do just a really, really quick update here before Sean gives an update. For, as you know, we've had a lot of discussion here in the last couple of weeks about our move into an integrated English model that sort of follows the work that we've done in innovative math. And so I want to start with the bigger picture. And part of this really gets at the long arc that will be done to improve how we do high school. We're at the forefront of really how the work is done. We have districts come around from around the country, literally, to understand and try to copy the designs that we've got in service of our students. So I'm going to start backwards design with the end in mind. And so we're going to share a story that I share pretty widely, but it's a really good story that gets at what does it look like for what we're trying to do for our students? So this is Jill Schnabel's story.
With people in the industry, we gather skills from them. What do you guys need to be prepared when you graduate from here? By taking these courses and activities and career experiences for these careers that you want to go into, which is exactly your fit here.
Basically, I went to Miss Hanson, decided I was a good fit for the ER department. I did an internship at Resurrection Hospital and I shadowed a nurse. I learned how to send labs, how to take like blood, document different procedures. And I kind of learned that with the different people and the different experiences, that I really loved helping others. Then I decided to go critical care, just because it's like that utmost reliance, and I kind of want that trust bond with people.
Wayne West actually has a CNA program that takes about a year to complete. I would suggest doing it. And then right after you pass your exam, you can go into any kind of setting. You can go to a hospital, a nursing home. Terms of post-high school, I plan to actually go to Oakton Community College. And I'm willing to start out by trying my hardest to get into the AR program. I don't want to be in debt the rest of my life. My return on investment is huge, because I can work for adult money after only like 20K to 30K for just my degree. Currently, I'm taking some classes out of the way for the nursing program, like microbiology and anatomy and psychology. But in the fall of this year, I'm going to actually be attending the nursing program. I'm excited for a lot of things. I'm excited for simulation lab. You get to kind of tell patients and how to interact with them. I'm going to actually take care of them. I work at Lutheran General Hospital as a nursing assistant, working through as a CNA that does help pay for college. I work with nurses, so I see every day what their job is. Honestly, I want to go into trauma like right after. At the end of these two years, I plan to work while getting my bachelor's. And if you work while getting your bachelor's, they'll ultimately pay for your bachelor's.
So Jill's story gets at a lot of really important design elements, and starting with the most simple of those design elements, which is trying to help our students find what they actually really have a passion to do after they leave us in high school. That's an important thing. That's been an area that, as simple as it sounds, people haven't built that design into high school. And so what we've done is, we've told everyone, you know, just take all these classes, go to college, and you'll have no problems. Well, that's never been true. That has literally never been true. And meantime, you know, in 2006, for example, there's about a half a trillion dollars of student debt in the debt market. Today, there's over 1.75 trillion. Now, do the plot on that, a half a trillion to 1.75 trillion, just since 2006. And that trend line, unabated, is just not sustainable. And we've got kids going out, going to college, thinking that's the only way to be successful, and incurring a lot of debt. And oftentimes, about 40 to 50% of the time, they go and work in jobs in which they're underemployed. So what we've tried to do in our district is really create a situation where every single student has a career path. Jill is an exceptional story. She does exactly what she wants to do. She's an increasingly common story, where she's working right out of school with the certification that she got when she was with us, and she's found an employer who's willing to pay for her schooling. That, believe it or not, is a growing trend that we're seeing amongst our kids. The CNA program that she took here is a seven-hour dual-credit program. There's two different courses, a total of seven hours. And I haven't looked at Jill's transcript, but my guess is she also took things like English 101 and a few other dual-credit or AP courses, so that she probably approached a year to two years of schooling under her belt when she started. She mentioned return on investment. So this is, again, another feature of our program that is unique to District 207. We have a program in place now because of how we've changed our curriculum, so that every one of our students, we hope eventually, looks at their career path with their ROI perspective. So they aren't spending too much money to get where they need to be. They can look at Mean Starting Stowy, for example, and design a roadmap. And so those elements, while they're really simple to describe at the one-student level, to do those at scale for 6,400 students is really, really complex. That's the shift in high school. Okay? We are framing in about the student's trajectory and their life and their passion, and what they want to do actually after they leave us with high school. People hyperventilate, literally hyperventilate over thinking that, you know, these accelerated classes or AP or any of that stuff matters. And it only matters to the extent that it's helping advance a student beyond high school. So we've got to really, really rethink this idea of what we're doing. There are districts around us, and they're being mentioned to us pretty frequently right now, who have actually stopped allowing freshman sophomore students to take AP classes. Why? Because they're seeing what we're seeing, which is an explosion of mental health issues among our kids. We've got to rethink how we're serving our students. And we've got to start with, who are you as a human? What is it that you're passionate about? What are you interested in? And then how do we find a way to find a path toward a career that pays a little wage? If we want to serve our students best, that's actually the accountability measure that matters more than anything else. And we've undertaken a way to actually study that. We really have a program, thanks to our partnership with School Links, that will allow us to study our students after we leave us. So part of what I think we've got to do from a messaging standpoint is help people understand high school has evolved here in District 207. We're at the forefront of that evolution. What we're doing now is what most districts will probably be doing 10 years from now. And that's okay. I'd rather be doing this work, because as I look at this work, until we get a story like this for every one of our students, we won't be done with this work. And so even though I know we're ahead of the game in this, I still feel locked in that we're 20 years behind in the work. So why do the work at all? Why do we frame this? For many, many years, and we were as guilty of this as any district, we separated and sorted students, even though the purpose of public education is actually to elevate every single student. And we separated and sorted, often by standardized test scores. And so what is axiomatic in research? And axiomatic is that no serious researcher doubts that it exists. It absolutely exists. You can see here, for example, this is SAT scores. And this is provided by the College Board, the people that actually administer the SAT. And you can see that in testing. You can go up in really pretty tiny household income bands, about $20,000 of household income bands. And as you go up in increments, and they stop at 200,000, but I guarantee you, they went from 200 to 300, from 300 to 400, they would find a linear direct correlation in the household income and standardized test scores. So any program that identifies students based on standardized test scores, what they're doing generally is they're identifying their wealthiest students, and they're selecting them into a path based on their household income. The gap to solve for in our work is really the enrichment gap. It's a neuroscience gap. And it's the difference between what a low-income family spends on enrichment and a middle to upper-middle class will spend on enrichment. And there's a significant difference, $14 to $15 to $1 in that. And that matters, because that development matters. So what should we be doing? We should be elevating every one of our students. So moving beyond this idea of separating and sorting students is really, really important. It's the foundational work that we do here in this district, and it's work that I think more and more high schools are trying to do. And it's the work that matters. The pandemic actually, for us, exposed this in many, many ways. And I'll give you some examples. We had students in some of our buildings who were trying to do really rigorous coursework while they were watching two or three or four siblings. We had students in other buildings and even the elementary level, whose parents joined other parents and, you know, hired teachers to create a learning pod for those children during the pandemic to make sure that those children didn't fall behind. So the discrepancy in the families was as front and center during the pandemic as it ever could have been. It just exposed the difference. And so we don't change the world. We don't make the world better for every student by perpetuating that system of inequality. We make the world better by trying to elevate and support every one of our students, to enrich every one of our students, and make sure that that's as level of playing field as we can control for inside our buildings. And so the work that we're doing really gets at that. John Hattie identifies acceleration as a .88 effect size. What he means by that is not by selective acceleration. What he means by that is it is wall-to-wall acceleration. We accelerate everybody, not just those who are already accelerated. So that's an important thing. The other thing for board members to remember is, we aren't new to this work. We've been at it over a decade. And here's what our experience has told us. As we've opened up access, as we've allowed students into our more structured courses, they've not only taken them, but they've succeeded in them. And they've done so without any cost to any of our students who traditionally would have had those courses sort of to themselves. Those students actually have taken way more of these advanced courses than they've ever taken in the history of our district. It's not even close. Last year, for example, and again, this is something that I was, you know, talking about our principals and the important work that we continue to do, because through the pandemic, our enrollment in these courses increased such that last year, our students, for the first time in district history, took over 7,000 college courses, 7,420 to be exact. And what's really cool about that is the students that traditionally were sitting in those courses, their course enrollment has more than doubled over the last 10 years. But our Hispanic student enrollment has grown over 400%. Our Black student enrollment has grown over 800% in the last decade. So the very students who traditionally would not have had a seat in those courses, not only occupy them now alongside their peers, but they're succeeding in that. So that's the work that we're doing, and that's important work. We can't take a step back from that work. These are the number of students enrolled. You can see that our white students are taking more than they've ever taken. There were over 2,000 that were enrolled. But our Hispanic students, for the, two of the last three years, our Hispanic students have finally caught in and surpassed Asian students in this district, even though they've long outnumbered them as our second-largest population of students in the district. We still have work to do. Our Black students are woefully underrepresented, and frankly, our Hispanic students are still underrepresented. So we still have plenty of work to do. But the trajectory, the lines that we're moving, we're moving in the right direction, and we can't take a step back from any of those things. And again, these are our AP and dual enrollment courses. And then finally, there is this idea, rigor gets thrown around a lot, and you will hear things like rigorous courses. Frankly, Jill's story illustrates, I think, what's going to be a growing trend, and that data's already kind of moving there. We're always going to offer a big AP footprint. But what's going to happen over time, because it makes better sense to our kid, and there's more currency for our students, is that our students will continue to take more dual-credit courses. Why? The AP courses, while, you know, they're considered often to be the most rigorous courses, what they really are are just voluminous with a lot of work, which doesn't always mean the same thing as rigor. Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. It's going to be meaningful work. But secondly, and most importantly, as Jill's story illustrates, our dual-credit courses way more often align with a career path. So they have currency towards someone's career. And then finally, And then finally, in Illinois, for example, colleges have to give our students credit if they earn an AP, a passing grade. But what they don't have to do is give life credit. So for example, if a student takes the equivalent of an English 101 dual-credit course, likely it's not University of Illinois is going to give them elective credit, which they can do, and make them take English 101 over. When our students take English 101 here, which we offer, they get English 101 credit in Illinois or any other state college. So it has a lot more value to our students in terms of what they do when they go out and leave us. And then what does rigor actually look like? We're in our fourth year of integrated math. Again, we're not new to this work. The cool thing about integrated math is that it takes the concepts of math, and it integrates them. We're the only, one of the only countries in the world that separates math by like Algebra, Algebra II, Geometry. Most countries in the world actually teach it in a much more integrated fashion. So our integrated math is all of those disciplines intertwined and repeating over time. So it's a spiraling effect. The other things that have happened is our students are leading that work much more than they ever have before, as opposed to being passive math students. They're active math students, leading their own work, working together in groups, which research tells you is a better way to learn. And so as a result of that, our students' success in math is the best it's ever been. We have the highest access we've ever had. We have, at the local level, students earning credit, by far the highest percentage of students earning credit in what we would consider college or college career-ready math courses than we've ever had in the history of the district. So the measurements are solid. Not for nothing, though, last year, our juniors in 2022, the first group to go through English 1, 2, and 3, took the SATs and our overall--
Math, 1, 2, 3.
Math, 1, 2, excuse me. Math, 1, 2, thank you. Took the SATs, and our math scores actually improved. Now, they improved by 5.1%. It's probably more likely than it's not that that is just a coincidence. But not for nothing, virtually every high school around us had scores that fell, and fell pretty significantly in some cases. So the fact that everyone else pretty much fell and we didn't would suggest that maybe there's something to this. It's going to take a while to know whether, how meaningful this is. But as this video from Linda Darlin-Hammond shows you, one of the things we're trying to apply is just better learning experiences. We're one of the few districts in America that coaches every teacher every year for one reason, and that's to make the power of high-impact strategies ubiquitous across every classroom in the district.
One of the things we know from cognitive science research is that inert knowledge, that is, things that you memorize, spit back, and never use, does not stick. And about 90% of the things that you might take in, memorize, use on a test, and never use again disappear. You don't have those usable in your brain later.
Consider a study done by Lawrenceville Academy, one of the most exclusive boarding schools in the U.S. They asked returning students to retake their science finals just three months after having completed their courses. Even though faculty eliminated all low-level details from the final, the average grade on these exams fell from a B+ to an F. Across two years and several courses, not one student still had command of all major concepts they presumably mastered just three months earlier.
So if we ran that test here on, you know, RAP classes, we'd have the same results. And part of that is just a design flaw of conflating doing a lot of homework, having a lot of work with rigor. Rigor is curriculum and learning opportunities that create enduring understandings, things that kids can not only use now, but they can learn, retain, and use for future learning. And so that's a different design change. I would say our integrated math is doing that in a way that's much, much better than anything we've done in math previously, and it replicates probably the classes where we do that very best. So we're on a journey to try to do that better and better in all of our classes. So I'm going to stop there, and Sean's going to give an update in English a little bit later. And that's all of my updates.
Thank you, Ken, for giving that big picture. I know that there've been questions, and I know we'll hear more from Sean. And I want to thank Sean in advance, because I know he's been trying to field a lot of questions, and it's a complicated issue. And sometimes there's the big picture, and it's hard to see the forest for the trees, but he's answering the detailed questions. So thank you, Sean, and we'll look forward to hearing from you. Okay, let's move along. Could we have the Education Committee update? Sheila?
All right. So the Education Committee met on October 11, 2022. Members present include a board member Collins and board member Iker. The meeting was called to order at 9:01 a.m. There were no public comments. We did have a curriculum update, and this is where Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Innovation, Dr. Sean Mesmer, presented the changes being made to the English program in D-207. The presentation was the PowerPoint that was presented to the 6th through 8th grade parents in our partner districts, including Pinoyar, D-62, D-63, and D-64. The curriculum development started in 2019, 2020, and is created on a competency-based model. Dr. Mesmer will actually be sharing this presentation with us tonight, as the superintendent had just shared with us. There were no other updates, and the committee was adjourned by member Iker at 10:33 a.m.
Okay. Thank you, Sheila. Finance Committee report. Linda?
Sure. So the Finance Committee meeting took place on October 17. Members present were myself, Dean Patress, and Sheila Yusupavilson. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 p.m., and there were no public comments. We did discuss the tentative tax levy. Assistant Superintendent Mary Clu ran through the timeline for the 2022 tax levy with the adoption of the tentative levy in November, publishing and holding a public hearing to be in compliance with the truth in taxation, and final adoption in December. This is the first time in tax cap history, the levy will be capped at 5% base plus any potential new growth, according to the tax cap language. Discussions followed on abatement following the adoption of the levy. Ms. Clu will bring anticipated abatement resolutions with a five-year forecast scenario in November, I think to this meeting later today.
To finance, yes.
Yes, yes. And noted the abatement does not have to be approved until March. We also discussed the investment portfolio about the low-team report. This quarterly report is produced by the Township Treasurer and shows the market value impact of our investment portfolio as the interest rates rise or fall. The district is carrying a value higher than the market value by 5%, meaning that if this were our fiscal year end, we would have a market value adjustment of $8,575,772. It is anticipated there will be a negative adjustment for the next two years due to rising interest rates. The final item that we discussed was the per capita student tuition. The annual financial report from last year sets the per capita tuition for this year. Tuition rate for '22, '23 is $22,676.26, which is an increase of $1,225.33 over last year. There are currently no true tuition-paying students. And the meeting was adjourned at 5:32 p.m.
Thank you, Linda. Could we have the Buildings and Grounds Committee report on October 17? Terry?
Yes. The meeting of Buildings and Grounds was held on October 17. And members present were myself, Linda Coyle, and Shin Lee. The call was ordered at 5:33 p.m. There were no public comments, and the agenda was Bid Package 5. We talked about Bid Package 5, including wood floor refinishing at East and HVAC at South, and there's approximately $1.2 million over budget due to the timeframe of when this scope was budgeted as to when it was bid. During this time, construction costs have greatly increased due to raw materials price surge, increased lead time, as well as a labor shortage. Last spring, contractors would not bid ahead for next summer work, so the bid was delayed until October. The budget overage is less than 0.5% of the total project cost. An overall budget update will be presented in November, and total construction project cost will be closed out in December of 2023. Then we talked about the construction update. Lisa King, project executive for Pepper Construction, provided a construction update for October. The field house is looking great at East and will be turned over by Thanksgiving. The pool is going well, and the renovated tech offices will turn over this month. The pool curbs are poured, and tiling and logos are being installed at South with a scheduled turnover in mid-November. The south field house is completed, and West is wrapping up the punch list, and all other projects are completed. With no further business, the meeting was adjourned at 6:01 p.m.
Thank you. Mary, you don't have anything to add there?
No.
Okay. But we'll go ahead and turn to you for the monthly status of finances.
Sure. In your board packet is the September financial statements. If you look at the expenditure side, you'll see only a little bit of variances. And that is, if you look at health-life safety expenditures, health-life safety case for ropes, we do ropes in the summer. So that's why that fund is 100% expended. And then in capital projects, you'll see it slightly higher as compared to previous years. And that's because we have less during the year construction and more summer construction. So that's why that is a little bit higher. If you turn the page and look at the assets, normally I don't comment on the assets, but you'll start to see a noteworthy pattern here. As property tax bills have been delayed, you'll see several funds will have negative cash balances, and will actually have to sell off for probably the first time in history some of our investments to cover a cash flow, because we projected the cash flow based on historical information, which shows us getting taxes in August. That is not what's happening this year. They're not going to come in until December. Therefore, we had to adjust our cash flow. Also included, and there was a nice summary in the Finance Committee, is the Investment Volatility Report. As interest rates continue to do a rapid climb, our portfolio has an average life of 1.86 years, which means that our investments are, we purchased, on average, 1.86 years ago when investment rates were lower. So that will have a negative market value. Generally, we hold them to maturity, which means this is a paper loss. You'll see that some we have to sell now, but that is an unusual thing. And then we anticipate that for the foreseeable future, meaning the next year or two, we'll have a negative market value adjustment on paper. And that will swing back positive as we'll then have these higher interest-earning investments in our portfolio. I'll entertain any questions, anybody has on the September financial report or the Investment Volatility Report.
Any questions?
All right. Can I just add, if the report, if the text is always going to come out in December now?
I hope not. They shouldn't. Just for this year, hopefully. Hopefully, it'll go back to their August timeframe that we've seen for a number of years.
So they're expecting the people will be receiving another one in spring, the first informant in March sometimes we get. So we are going to give it to two taxes property, for property, commercial property owners.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Instructional Services. Sean?
Yeah. So the first item in your board packet is a 2021, 22 participation report. Do you bring this every year, just to give a board an idea of what our students are involved with? Probably the two years, two school years to look at are 1920 and then again, 2122. 2021 was the COVID year, where many of our students opted to remain at home for remote learning. And so you can see that that year is abnormally small with some of the participation rates. But if you compare 21 to 20, 2122 to 1920, we're starting to see some rebounding in student participation. And it shifts every year for various different reasons. Might be things that they're involved with outside of school. But we also know that there are more clubs and growing within schools, which may shift some of the participation from one, you know, one event or club to another. So I'll entertain any questions you might have on student participation.
I did have one question. I noticed one big jump. I mean, the numbers are coming back, but one big jump was in special interest clubs. What are special interest clubs, if you're able to?
Sure. So they are clubs that, you heard mention anime, for example. So a student is involved in anime, that's a very specific type of Japanese animation. So it's more clubs like that, which is kind of not surprising, as our culture finds more and more niches for special interests of individuals. They tend to then produce clubs at school where kids of like mind find themselves, and it's great.
I think it's really interesting that that's a big jump. It's almost, you know, it's a really big jump. And so they're finding different ways to spend their time and form, you know, groups and things like that. Are you finding that, kind of?
Maine-South's hottest club is Tea Club.
Did you say Tea Club?
Actually, doing tea, yeah.
Tea ceremonial kind of thing?
Yeah. I mean, there's tons of stuff. We're seeing a lot of places. It's cool.
Well, I think it's kind of, I think it's kind of great, actually.
And COVID is its student.
Yeah.
That's, that's--
And it might be part of that resurgence of kids actually being able to be physically together in a way that they weren't able to do for a while. So, you know, it's tough to have tea in the same room when you're Zooming here. It's intense.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Okay. English program update?
Yeah. So I'll just run through a brief presentation, just so that the board knows what we shared with our partner districts. This presentation was shared through the Egg Committee back in early October. It's been pushed out in Friday notes, and so if you take a look at your notes over the last few weeks, this will look familiar. A couple of important things, now that we have finished with our presentations, our last one was November 2 for District 63. We will be pushing out through D-207 news item, but also to our partner districts, so they can disseminate it to the 6th through 8th grade parents in our partner districts. A voiceover presentation, which is also translatable, to make sure that our families that have English as a second language can access that. A two-page description of the changes. And then also a frequently asked question list, which is, we have about 118 questions that we collected. We've sort of boiled that down into a few general categories that kind of speak to the same topics. That'll be coming out as well, and we'll be pushing that through email. We'll be making sure to post it on our district website. So the timing of this did align with when we decided to give our first conversations about switching to integrated math. So the fall prior to the first class that would experience integrated math, we went out and did partner presentations then, and we did them again this year as we moved to English. Couple of just highlights of what we tried to emphasize was the need for powerful literacy skills, reading literature, informational literature, writing, communication, and collaboration. They're the four competencies, the broad buckets under which a lot of our assessment will occur moving forward. I think something that's important for us to remember is that these will not change year from year. That's not that different from the Common Core State Standards, which we all have used. Illinois adopted those years ago. But it is important to the retention topic that Ken showed in the video earlier. From the standpoint that, a premise of moving in this direction to competency is to boil education down to what really matters, what skills are really transferable and are reflected in the world of work and school, so that we can continue to hone those skills year after year after year after year. A good math example is, in our old iteration of Algebra I and Geometry, Algebra II, we don't tell students anymore to take a year off from Algebra and then come back and try and reengage them after the gap of a year. They get each of those math disciplines every single year. And while it's correlational, as Ken pointed out, I do think that did play a role in helping us to start fill that, sort of that, the learning gap we were all concerned about with COVID. I think that five-point increase had a lot to do with the flexibility that an integrated math approach enables a school to take. I won't claim causation, there's too many factors that go into that, but there's definitely a correlation worth watching over time. a correlation worth watching over time. So just, we also then gave just a timeline of when this work started. As you can see, it started in 2019, 2020. It did slow down in 2021 just because of the nature of things due to the pandemic. And then we made sure we got back and really worked hard over the course of this year and continuing this year. We'll have about seven or eight more pullout days for staff involved with this so they can dedicate the full day to continually, to continue to go out the rubrics and the assessments that will be used in English I. And then that will continue each year moving forward as we move through English I, English II, English III and electives. It'll always be a little bit different for AP and dual credit because we don't have full control over what that looks like. College Board, which is the organization that oversees all AP curriculum, they have a very stringent curriculum that is needed to be covered and adhered to. And when we work with our college and university partners, we are having the students that engage with what their assessment structures are, so that the students really do get a sense of before I head off to college as a freshman, having experience in AP and dual credit gives them an idea of what they're going to be seeing on a more regular basis once they graduate. So this is a quick overview. A lot of this is, all of it, is the competency-based education model. That's something that's very different than the way we've operated in schools in the past. And so just a couple of highlights we shared of what the real focus is when you talk about competency. It's high expectation, transferable skills. Very rarely do you do anything in life in isolation, the way we often teach. And so that is a big part of the competency-based approach. Choice is incredibly important as well. The way that we bring relevance and meaning to a student has to do with what that student is interested in and where they see themselves going. Feedback and then a high level of support. Feedback, I shouldn't, I shouldn't take a quick step over. Feedback is super important as students get an opportunity to hone those skills and put corrections into play. But the support piece is really important as well. We have a very robust MTSS structure that continues to be refined and grow. And we are, we are dedicating so much of our time and energy to make sure that regardless of whether the student has a learning need or needs to, or that need is for more extension and in-depth work, that we can provide that to students, all within one setting or with supports around the outside to ensure that all students are getting access to a high level of curriculum with high expectations, but with high support. So just share this as well, these are, one of the rubrics, just to get a sense, we wanted to share with families what it would look like. And so you can see there's performance indicators and then you can see how those would be scored across this rubric here. And so what I like about this rubric is you can see the depth as students go. So for example, English I, you might be a two, which would be developing, but of course that would be not yet at English II, English III and so on. And so as you follow that across, you can see how they would change over each year, what the expected performance level would be for students. And then you can also see what gets added to the performance indicator that shows that growth of depth and complexity over time. I do want to mention that the depth and complexity, particularly in English, math was more and faster in our accelerated classroom. English has always been more depth and complexity, not faster. But we use the same term for both, right? And so sometimes that gets lost in translation as acceleration is used for, to cover many different topics in education when it really means faster. Even when it doesn't, we still use that term. We talked about what was same and different. So we talked about what was different is that all students are enrolled in English I as ninth graders, there's no separation there. And the same for English II and 10th grade. What we're going for is more individualization. And so an example that we've used is that a student who, as maybe the language in writing and reading complexity of Romeo and Juliet, may read that in Old English, but at the same time you may have a student who we want to have access to that. So they may read a comparable version, not in Old English, which is not English, by the way. It does, it's Old English for a reason. But then they can come back and have that same conversation on themes and the genre and what's going on in the novel, but they are being challenged at different levels. And the key for us in that realm is that those students are coming together and bringing their individual lived experiences together and sharing those to help all students gain perspective from various different contexts. Couple of other things that I think are important are that we've expanded our opportunities. So we're opening up our dual credit coursework to juniors. AP has always been junior and senior level. That's what's recommended by the college board, but we are opening up our dual credit to a full year earlier and students can now earn up to 12 college credits instead of only six in the new model, given the way that we've shifted things. And then the student experience. Just sort of, this is the one slide and the last slide, we described kind of how we put together our vision of learning. We gave a little bit of history of that, that we started back in 2017, 2018 with the visit from Will Richardson, which then led us to create what our vision of learning would be in District 207. And so that's the focus that we, we really came out of that work with. Again, transferable skills, rigorous, relevant, inquiry-based, really focused on what you're being asked to do in the real world. That includes student agency and choice and importantly, transparent feedback. One of the things that we hear time and time again from our business partners is that the way that they give feedback to their employees, very often is the first time their employee has ever gotten feedback in that way, which is on a rubric, is very direct, with some very direct expectations that individuals are given. This replicates that real world scenario, which helps build student, quite frankly, resilience. One of the things that we think is really important and it's in our vision of learning is this idea of resilience. Well, the earlier we can have students learn what they're doing well, what they need to work on and hear that in a very direct and supportive manner as to how to get better, as opposed to a vague letter grade, right? I always get A's, but maybe there's something in there that I don't do well and I never really hear about it and I never really correct it. That's a really important piece. Our business partners say it would be super helpful if they weren't the ones teaching young adults how to take critical feedback. And so again, that's another piece of that resilience, that the sooner that starts, the better, particularly for as they go off into the world of work. So that was the general presentation. We had, like I said, 118 questions, great questions. It's pretty complex work. And so you've seen that I've been answering some emails that we had in the follow-up to that, and they are long and they're long for a reason because they are complex. And so there's a lot of factors that go into why we headed down this path, but also what we've seen over time as we've started to go down this road in 2018. Happy to ask, is there any further questions or information you'd like?
Thank you.
That was great.
Sean, very quickly, so as you have explained, we've been seeing through emails, receiving a various concerned emails or questionable emails from certain particular parents on this particular subject. So as you have explained, can you elaborate a little more in more easy terminology, easy language on? So basically, it's based on the situation, what we're hearing is pretty much kind of like we are moving into, of course, the right target from the traditional to a more so-called customized updated level of such programs or courses. But why do we keep getting this larger voices from a certain parents and also kind of so-called resistance regarding where we are moving forward toward this particular subject?
Well, I wouldn't want to speculate for particular parents or whatever their reason is. One is it's changed and it's different. We're doing something different than what has been done for 100-plus years in the way that people are educated. In fact, everyone we're speaking with, unless they went to a very different type of educational setting, we've all gone through the exact same system. It's very rare that a group, that all of the people in the United States really do go through some very similar experience. This is different than that. And so it's complex to communicate about it, it's complex to understand. But also when you have something called accelerated and then remove that, it feels like there's a loss. What we're saying is that it's actually not a loss, that what we want to do is make that accelerated curriculum, make the opportunities that kids have available, not to a subset or a specific group based on a standardized test score, but that all students would have access to that. And so I don't think anyone opposes that. I think it's sort of just the perception, what they know, kind of what they've always thought about, quite frankly, what they've been told. We have, we have a program, a particular program in one of our partner districts, which has separated and sordid students from a fairly early age. And so to say we're not going to do that does fly in the face of what families are used to.
And they also think they're going to lose something because that separation is not going to be occurring once they get to District 207, any longer.
And what my question is?
But they're not. I just want to say that they're not losing something.
But I, I'd like to hear why they're not. So we've got, you know, academically strong kids coming in as freshmen regardless of income level, and I know that there is a disparity, you know, based on income and test scores. But if you've got, you know, some students who are really academically strong and are lower income and may be fighting for these academic scholarships, schools do look at, I know we're talking weighted is different, but they do look at if you're in accelerated classes and that won't be designated anymore. How do you say that that's not a loss to those students?
So a couple of things related to that, I think you have to separate scholarship from admission. We've talked with a number of colleges and universities that you could consider from highly selective to community college. And all of those institutions for admission unweight the grade. So they take your, if you're a 4.8 on a five-point scale, they translate that to a 4.0 scale. Then they go from there. Now, what they're not doing, and this would actually probably be a civil rights violation, they're not, they're not looking at our kids and saying, well, this student at Nutria can do this and they're on a 5.0 and this school over here is on a 4.0. And so they're better or more rigorous than that. What they're actually doing is comparing the students in that building and saying, did this student take the most rigorous curriculum available? And so when you're looking at that, the answer is yes, the student is taking the most rigorous curriculum available. The other piece of this is, and weighting is often used as the indicator of whether or not a course is accelerated or honors. We're not doing away with all weighting. And so a college or university would see that the student, let's talk about our typical student who we might call a high flyer, is still taking multiple APs, multiple dual credit courses for the purpose of, you know, being ready for college or college entry. In fact, Eileen had reminded us that the student that we just watched actually was a straight A student in multiple AP courses. Very often there's this myth and quite frankly stigma that if I watch her, oh, well, she's going to nursing and she's up at community college. Well, that was a choice of hers because it made the most sense. Having been, you know, in the community now for a very long time, there is that stigma associated with Oakton, which really it's a great first step for folks, particularly, you know, you mentioned a student who might not be as economically advantaged. So what their colleges are doing is they're not, it's not us versus Nutria, us versus Highland Park. It's Maine versus Maine, what is offered?
So I just want to reel that down.
But how will, so are you going to say for colleges, when they look at someone who, they look at all of their classes that a kid takes and they compare that, they're like, well, you know, John Smith didn't take accelerated English his first two years, even though he's got all these credits, and then someone else from a different school did.
They don't compare from the school.
They don't compare.
But how do you know that? Like, does it, do we, do you, how do they know?
We share, we share.
That's my question.
I think we'd be sharing our classes.
Let me show, share two, two important points. One is our school profile. The school profile, and I have to admit, I didn't realize this until I moved into this position, was that the school profile carries an incredible amount of weight because it describes what is available at your school and gives you the context in which to look at a student's transcript. The other piece though, is the scholarship piece. And so two things on that. One is that at the school level scholarships, when I read through some concern, like, oh, I have a concern about this school or that school, each of those actually had an acknowledgement about a 4.0 scale. So they acknowledge that schools are doing different things. And so the Kelly School of Business at Indiana is one that's often referenced. And they say a 3.8 on a 4.0 scale. Well, there's an equivalent of that on a 5.0 scale, right? So they, they often say, well, your highest, your highest GPA, which is often weighted. But even in their own statement, they're acknowledging not everybody's on that. And so what they do is for that level, they'll take a look at, this is what your school profile says, this is what the student is scoring. And if for some reason a student needed for us to go back and say, hey, this is an AP kid, if the student took an accelerated English or what have you, we can then say to the university for scholarship purposes, here's what it would be if it was on a weighted scale. And so schools that have done some of these changes, that's the way they've addressed it. They have not seen any diminishment in their students' ability to achieve scholarships. Because I know there, some are award-based upon application and if you are X, then it's X amount of money. And so we'll always be accounting for that in the process so a student doesn't have any material loss.
So, so if there's, if there's a scholarship that, you know, is looking at the GPA pretty specifically, our English I grade for a student, you would go in and you would somehow weight that?
We could. If that's what's necessary, we could absolutely do that for a good.
I do get the weighted is, is not as important. I just worry, and thank you for explaining it, that our kids all across the board and most importantly, the ones that need the academic scholarships.
Yeah, absolutely.
That are high achievers, you just don't want them to be, you know, nicked because they didn't take accelerated.
There's a bigger picture here though, too. And it's getting lost in this conversation. We have got to reframe this conversation and stop making parents hyperventilate about at the age of five, getting their kids into highly selective schools. We have to send the message because the truth is, it's a buyer's market in higher ed, it's not a seller's market. And what we've done, and I'm as guilty of it as anybody, I pushed us to get to a 2.0 challenge index and then a 3.0. There's a reason we haven't seen us trying to get to a 4.0. And it was, I learned and now I know better. And so that, that push, push, push for our kids in the AP courses, talk to a parent who's got a kid up at 2:00 in the morning every night doing their homework for AP and is about out of their gourd and their mental health is suffering. Our trend lines are this, we've sort of flattened AP and we teach just about every AP you can teach, we'll probably always offer that. There's some people that will never be able to get past AP, but the growth for us is in dual credits. Jill's a good example and thank you for pointing that. I suspect that that was probably her profile and it doesn't surprise me a bit, but she's a much better example of the future, which is college courses that actually support her chosen career path. We've got to start being more human about how we do this work and stop this arms race that is seeing, I think it's helping to fuel the mental health issues that we're seeing in this country because we've just forgotten, these are kids, these are human beings, what are you interested in? We don't ask that question. We, we just hyperventilate about, we must take this, you know, these accelerated AP and, and we've got to stop conflating, my kid's got a lot of homework, so they're really working hard and learning things. No, they're not. And the research tells us that. So if it's meaningful and if it's rigorous, they'll actually be invested in it, they'll learn more, they'll have enduring understanding and we'll be able to design learning pathways that much, much better aligned with a student's true passion. So we have got to change the conversation on this and help people. Enrollment and Enrollment in higher ed in every sector, private, public, across the board, is down. It's in every single sector. So, and if you really want to get cynical, look at how the highly selective schools even get highly selective. You know what they do? They bombard kids who maybe, maybe on paper, might qualify to get into Columbia or Harvard or Dartmouth or any of those. And the more kids they can send rejection letters to, some of these rating services, the higher they rate them. It is the most cynical thing possible. So we have got to help our parents understand. First of all, they need to be discriminating consumers. If they're not looking at ROI, some of our students can afford to go anywhere, their parents can send them anywhere, but most of our students can't. And we have got to turn this into a consumer-oriented return on investment, look at where our kids are going to go. So we're getting tied up in some of these small details and missing the bigger picture of what college is about. In Maine Township, where we sit right now, we wrap around the northeast side of O'Hare with nine communities. The number-one distribution of good jobs exists in the space beyond a high school degree and before a four-year degree. The number-one distribution. That's true across the zip codes in America. But go into any college and career center, what we've got? We've got pennies for all the four-year schools, ignoring the largest distribution of good jobs that Jill actually works in right out of high school, ignoring the largest distribution of good jobs. We have got to be informed by where the jobs really are and also the science about learning and also the data about serving our kids better.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree.
I'll get off my soapbox.
No, no, I, look, that's absolutely correct. But I also think we have to answer some questions.
We do.
Parents, students get this, take the most rigorous courses, or you're going to be judged on that. So if we can partner an answer to that that is, you know, we are not taking anything away. And then come around to saying, but, you know, everything else, we can still share with them, but we do need to be able to answer these questions.
Can I throw something in, too?
Yes, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just on the subject of not taking anything away, and thank you for letting, indulging me in speaking because this is pretty near and dear to my heart. I've been an English teacher my whole career, except when I was a principal and department chair for a long time. And I've taught AP and scored AP exams for a long time in English. And I think the best way I would explain to parents that they're not losing something, if your kid is a so-called high flyer and goes into an AP class, you know, I think of it differently as a parent. When someone asks, "How are your kids doing?" I think, okay, well, this is the class she's in, and this is the grade she's getting, and she's, you know, she's on track, she's doing her thing. I don't know at a level of complexity beyond that, you know, unless I'm studying her grades. So for most parents, those little kind of outward indicators are what we know to know that our kid's doing well. But specifically for the kid that you mentioned, the low-income kid, the first-gen kid, as I was, the kid who needs that scholarship money to get to school and who is striving, the parents aren't going to necessarily know whether that child is being challenged at an individual level or not. And I can vividly remember a kid who walked into my English classes in junior year at Highland Park, who could have rocked a five on that AP exam before he even walked in the door. And if I had just said, "Okay, keep racking up your A," somebody would have been happy with that because it would have looked on the outside as if he was doing well and if he was getting what he needed. But if I hadn't been able to challenge him at a level of complexity that he deserved alongside his peer, who wasn't necessarily there, I would have failed him, right? I would not have been serving him in the way that he deserved. So I think the construct of what accelerated classes look like and what English 1 Excel or English 2 look like, give the indication that your kid is being truly challenged in the way that they deserve. But you don't really know that that's true. That's not necessarily true. That's not necessarily true at an individual level. And sometimes the way that they're challenged, Ken's point about the kid up at 2:00 in the morning, sometimes the way that they're challenged isn't really a way that prepares them to be better thinkers, writers, readers, and communicators. So I would say that the move that we're doing is giving all kids something that they desperately need, which is individualized, personalized approaches to giving them real feedback, not just distilled feedback that they have to translate into a letter, but actual feedback on how they're doing and what skills they're succeeding in and where they need to grow. Not every kid is going to come in, even if they come in on, if we boil it down to one singular MAP score, and a kid comes in at a high level on that MAP score, there are 15 factors that go into that MAP score, and they're not going to be top of the line on all of them. And unless we're really differentiating well and designing for differentiation, we're not going to address those things that they need. And if the core competencies, like our teachers and chairs have delineated, then they deserve that. We can't not make sure we're giving those kids what they need. Thank you.
Just want to say...
Can I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, thank you, Eileen, for sharing that because I think, like, your narrative and the experience you had was really important and kind of leads to my question. You know, I don't ever believe this decision's made in isolation, right? So, you know, Sean, can you share with us a little bit about, like, what has the collaboration and the support looked like from, you know, the teachers, the buildings? Because clearly, you know, you're working with them. So if you could share that, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. So as we started with math, we started the same way with English, and we adjusted and made some changes related to the process. We wanted to make sure that not only were the administrators involved, but a core group of teachers who are helping us put this together really could identify their own why for why this is important. And we basically laid out, well, here is the framework for competency-based education. And it is a framework, it's a suite of best practices. It's not do this, then do that, then do that. It's not prescriptive. And so within that framework, our teachers have built this program. They've built all of this out by getting together and saying, "Yeah, we believe in what that framework can allow us to do, so let's put our expertise to the task of creating this." In fact, when I said to that first group, you know, this should be, I think this is exciting because you will be setting the framework for English education in this district moving forward for decades. Some of them were scared. That level of the weight they felt really rattled them a little bit because they did feel like, "Wow, I'm being given ownership over something." And I think that stayed true to form all the way through. We had some hiccups. But I know there's been a lot of consternation around this idea of differentiation. And I think it's good to remember that the vast majority of our students, that 80%-ish, and those of you who've seen our MTSS presentation will kind of get this breakdown, is that the vast majority of kids will be more, we'll be grouping them around interests and things and support that they need because 80% of the kids probably need almost exactly the same thing with some tweaks here and there. There'll be another 10% of those students in that room who may need some extra support. That extra support exists now and is not going away. So they'll get that support. Now, we are revising that. We're putting a really scrutinizing eye on is what we currently have, what is still needed as we move forward as support. And Katie can speak to that specifically from the IEP standpoint. But then we will have a small percentage, a 5% of kids, who just need really one-on-one support. And they most likely won't be in that particular mix. But if they are, they'll get that extra need of one-on-one support. So very often, when we say individually challenged, we're like, one-on-one, one-on-one. And yeah, a teacher, it's almost impossible to do on a daily basis. But we have been building that into the PD. And so every one of our teachers goes through, if you're a new teacher, you go to our new teacher cohort, every one of them has a year-long PD in differentiation. Something that's unique, that I think is important to share, is that when we started with our veterans, differentiation was something that used to happen in the elementary schools, but didn't, you know, elementary school teachers differentiate, high school teachers don't. What you now see is kids coming out of program, kids, young adults coming out of programs where they're pretty well-versed in differentiation because it has, it is part of educational pedagogy at all levels in a way it wasn't before. But those, we do a year-long PD, and that is one of their four years. And we've been doing differentiation professional development with our veterans staff since 2018. And so they've had a long period of support, which that core group of teachers we're working with, they're relying on that support we've given them, that training that we've given them, that emboldens them to say, "Yeah, I can do this." And just an aside that I think is important, too, our number of students in accelerated in the past was much larger than any one given program in any of our partner districts. So we've already had a greater amount of access at that level. We're just expanding that a little bit more. And if a student, and many of them do, in English in particular, because colleges will only accept the one AP course in terms of giving you three, you know, sort of your three credits for it, many of our students take other varied electives in their senior year, which encompass students who have regular English through AP. And so that broad swath already exists. Our teachers have already been teaching those students in that way for quite a while. So it's not as new as some folks may feel that, "Hey, this is new, I don't know how I'm going to do this." And we are paying attention. We used Math Coaches, that's not off the table for English when we first started. We kind of rolled them off over time. And we did commit to a class size, which we're willing to do again for English, to make sure that support's there, so that we're doing the right thing, folks are getting what they need, feel supported. And so that's been the bigger picture. It's tough, it's tough to remember. We've been doing this for four years. And so to boil it down all of a sudden into one, here we go. Thank you for taking me down that memory lane of all that we have done.
You're welcome. No, but thank you for answering that and for covering because there is a lot that went into this. And I just want to be clear that, you know, we acknowledge that, too.
I mean, we tweaked all the way along in math. We'll do the same in English because our whole goal is, if we ever thought we were putting our kids at a disadvantage, we would change course. We would not go down a path where we felt our students were going to be ill-served or underserved by what we were doing. And we made adjustments in math, and I'm sure we're going to make them in English. That doesn't make teachers feel good because people kind of like to do something and say, "Okay, we got it." But that's not the way life works, right? We continue to tweak, we continue to get better, and challenge our staff and ourselves.
Terry?
Yeah, one of the questions that came up in some of the letters that Jeff wrote in, and I'm curious how it works with, or how it's working out with teachers. So when you have a broader population, you know, as opposed to like segregated high flyers and then segregated, you know, roomful of IEPs. So you have a whole population of kids. How do the teachers, or what is the teacher's time? You know, how does that work? I'm not answering this one, but how does the teacher's time get segregated for each kid? You know, do they have enough time to get to each kid? Do they spend more time?
Terry, most of our classes aren't that segregated.
Huh?
Most of our classes are, I mean, think of the word segregation as we're saying.
I mean, that's not, you know, that's the right word, but...
Well, it is in some ways.
Is it homogenous versus heterogenous?
Oh, okay, all right, homogeneous, heterogeneous, okay, that can deal with that.
But that's the differentiation part of it.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things that are different than what we used to do. So for example, we're on a block schedule. So we have 80 minutes of time. That's a very different lesson structure than when it's 50 minutes at a clip. It does give you the ability to, and what I've seen it done well, conference with individual students while other groups of students are working on various different things that relate to what they need to work on. But that's really, that's part of the art of teaching for the teacher. It's not so much, "Everybody gets five minutes of my time," as much as, "What does my class need right now? Does that mean everyone's ready to kind of push, go a little bit deeper? Maybe the conversation yesterday needs to be closed in the following day or revisited." So it's really tough to boil this down to. And that's why I never like to talk about instructional minutes because no minute in these circumstances are actually the same, right? So that's really the art of the teacher that we've been supporting them through professional development to say, "What do my kids need? What does that group look like? Is that support that I can provide inside of a class? Is that support I'm going to partner with another teacher of English 1 on?" We're trying to change the definition of what a classroom looks like to be my 25 to our 1,500 students that we're trying to teach and, or 1,000 students in a class, whatever you want to, you know, whatever, 600, sorry. And it's that communal piece we're trying to change. Because I will say this, if you decide you are going to teach the way you were teaching 10 years ago and you are going to stay isolated in your classroom, this will kill you. You will not be able to do this. But that's what needs to happen is, because that's not the way the world works, right? We don't go to work in this time and space and not talk to anybody else. It's really changing the paradigm. And so that's what makes this difficult to explain is because we all grew up in a particular system. We have a mental model. And this breaks that mental model, and it doesn't feel good. And so I can appreciate why folks, you know, have some concern and question about this. So I don't know if I answered the question.
Yeah, no, I guess what I was trying to do, I really support this. I totally support what we're doing. And I've seen it work, so I mean, I'm very excited about it. And the fact that, I guess what I'm trying to address are some of the questions that came up when I was reading letters and I thought, "Okay, that's a good question." And one of it was, and I think you're right. I mean, when I'm thinking about it, I'm thinking of a model of teacher, 25 kids, and, you know, kind of, in a way, an old model in the sense of, I'm not thinking about some of the supports that they have now that didn't exist, you know, 20 years ago. But I think that we have to, we owe our residents, I guess, to tell them that, you know, that if you don't have, I guess, like, to show them the supports that were given with, you know, that the teachers aren't totally stressed out by this or...
Terry, the one thing that's important, I'm sorry, we have a really important proof of concept on this. We've got four years of math. So we have experience in some of the supports that Sean's talking about, where we put them into play in classes that are almost like the English classes, and we have results as a result of that. And as a former English teacher, I think, all due respect to my peer English teachers, it's much more complex probably to do this in math, and we've been able to pull it off. So we do have proof of concept. I know he doesn't agree, but I'm just, I'm going to concede, I'm going to concede to the math teacher. I do think, that's not for nothing, that, there's real value in our experience. The other thing is, and it's a parcel of this, is very, very few districts, I think, support professional development for the teachers in the way that we do. And I think that is a huge advantage that we've got in this work. So I think the coaching that we do annually for each teacher, the work we've done in differentiation, and then the just-in-time professional development that we can do around this will help us attend to the variable that we can control, you know, that is the most meaningful, which is the teacher quality. But I think having the proof of concept of doing it gives us a lot of confidence that we can certainly continue to do it.
And I think this is a lot about education. I mean, I hope we all look at this as an opportunity to talk to parents and community members about this change because it's not easy. It was not easy for me to get a full understanding of this. I'm still learning, sitting in this room. And we've been talking about this for quite a while. So it is complicated, there's no doubt about it. But I think we just have to use it as an opportunity, explain it as simply as we can, even though it's complicated, and get parents to understand it. And I think we will, and I'm fully committed to this. I think it's better overall.
And if I could just add one thing that I think does kind of help think about how this is different, is what we're doing when we're designing learning now is we are designing curriculum and learning with all students in mind from the beginning. So thinking of that student who needs to be pushed to go deeper and further and then also keeping in mind the students who are going to need more support. So we're designing our curriculum and instruction with them in mind from the beginning as opposed to thinking about, "Oh, I have this curriculum that I have, and I have to make the students fit that curriculum. And then if they don't, giving something different." So I think when you think of it from that universal design and kind of thinking about, like, even, you know, marry all the construction stuff, when you build buildings and think of everyone in mind, how much more accessible and how much more they can change and grow, that's what we're doing with learning.[1740.54] And so I think it's a really simple way to kind of think about the complexity of what we're doing.
That's great. Yeah, that's great.
And I would say, too, how many students who we say are accomplished academically have a 504, which requires certain, you know, adjustments, whether that's more time, whether that's, you know, providing things in writing rather than just listening and taking notes. They're high-achieving students. But at the same time, they have a need that in the past, you know, going back, you know, 20 years, we would have just said, too bad. This is what it means. This is what rigor means.
Yeah, last little coda to this story I told about the kid who walked in able to rock a five on the first day. I mean, I think, especially after COVID, we have to remember how much of learning is social. But when I write college recs for that group of kids, I send out a questionnaire. And one of the questions was, what did you learn this year from someone in the class? You know, from someone else in this class, another student, not me. And that class was pretty heterogeneous for an AP class, as a matter of fact. And he was in a base group with the kid who, I think, had the lowest pre-ACT score in the entire section. And he talked about what he learned from that kid, who had a completely different perspective on learning, who had very different skills, but taught him something that he didn't expect. And it was great to see his reflection on the fact that someone who had never been in a class with his entire academic career taught him more than I did. Well, okay.
And what a great prep.
Let's not forget that.
And what a great prep for work or college, you know, when you're sitting next to folks who come from all walks of life, not just your town.
Jim?
Yeah, just want to quickly say, today's thorough Sean's explanation, it does help me understand much better, most definitely. And we all know that change is always hard, very difficult. And whenever there's changes, there's a other side of concern, parents or the community members, as always. But, you know, we went through. And first of all, just want to recognize that I think your leadership is doing a great job on responding every issue that was sent from the emails. You guys are explaining it very promptly, answering it, you know, right away as much as you guys can. So I think that's a wonderful job on that. And then just want to say that I value your decisions, because you are the professionals. So a lot of times, we as a community members or the parents does not really know where our education, the future of our education, future of our students are moving into. You guys are know better, and that's why we as a community members, all members that depend on your judgment or leadership on this. And I'm sure this will be the same, too. Along with that line, I think the communication is very important on this, as always, related to what it was, too. Somehow, somewhere, if we could, as a district, could able to communicate a little more better, and I'm sure you guys are scheduled to do a various presentation meeting with the parents and so on, relating to this particular issues. But along with that, maybe to help easy on explaining this to the parents or concerned parents, maybe share possible Q and As or more better explanation to put our district website or newsletters or even local newspapers or anything else. That might be easy on or better explaining on this situation than more certain limited communication with the few concerned parents through email. Maybe I can suggest that a particular.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll be doing some follow-up tonight, and, you know, my own self-reflection on things I could have done better. Trust me.
Like, yeah.
I've done a lot of self-reflection on how I may approach this differently moving forward, and things I could have been clearer about. But we're definitely following up with more information. And hopefully, some of the questions that were asked here tonight are on our frequently asked question list. Some questions that were asked of me by a parent via email earlier today are on that frequently asked question list. So hopefully, that will help folks understand a little bit more about where we're going.
But like everyone says, I personally to value the professional education decisions that you guys have been provided all along throughout various issues, especially with Dr. Ken and everyone else, too. So this is reason that I value and I trust your decisions, and I'll be supportive very much. So, and I think this situation will be the same as well. So continue moving forward.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. I know we took a little extra time on this, but I really wanted the board, full board, to have an opportunity. Sean, thank you. I think both you and Ken really did a good job. I know more information is going out. If any of you have more questions, you know, talk to Sean, talk to Ken. I, you know, you want to be as informed as you can be. And I'm guessing at education, we'll be hearing a little, at the education committee, there'd probably be, you know, be follow-ups to this.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, let's move along. Thank you very much. Now you get to go to the Illinois School Report Card.
Thank you. Really, this is a, just to give you a quick follow-up. We'll do a more in-depth dive on the report card in December. We'll have a little presentation, do some comparisons, so you can understand this a little bit more deeply. We get this information on October 31st, really. And so I don't like to turn it around so fast that I miss something. I like to be able to do this in time. But we are, all three schools are commendable again this year, as they've been from the start of this new model of assessment of schools in Illinois. Just gave you some of the parameters that were judged on on page two. And just two new, two things that I think are important. We talk a lot about college and careers. There's a complex formula called the business rules that the state uses for calculating sort of what your score is with college and career. They've acknowledged there's been some problems with that. So there is no score for college and career this year. That'll be hopefully fixed and coming out next year. And then there is a new metric called the Equity Continuum, the Equity Journey Continuum. So that number, you'll take a look at that, it'll be something new. I'll present next month. But important to know about that is that data is from 2018, 2019. And so it is old data. So hopefully, as we move this forward and we have newer data coming for this school year, as we talk about this next fall, you'll see some dramatic changes there. As you know, we've done some of that, just the last.
Sean, will you be presenting that next month?
Yes.
Is there something you will be sending out in Friday Notes that we could have in advance?
Yes, certainly. I can include that in Friday Notes at some point in November, as well as, this will all be posted, just the general information will be posted to the websites. It's required by school code.
Okay.
So make sure that gets out, so the public has access to it.
Okay.
But yeah, I'll follow up in Friday Notes.
For schools designated, targeted, and comprehensive, what does that mean?
So if you are targeted, it means you fall in the, I think it's the 67th percent of the state's total school population in terms of scoring. So if you're targeted, that requires you to start a plan. You also get support from other school districts to help develop that plan. And comprehensive means it's on the total school overhaul. One thing that's really important, though, too, about how you're rated by the state, it's kind of like when you had a professor who said, I only give, only 5% of my class can get an A. So it's not really a benchmark where if you hit it, you, you know, you're showing your efficacy. There's actually always a bottom 10%. And so that scale then tends to slot. So there are unfortunate situations with some school districts who have done nothing different than they did the year before. And they could move from commended to targeted, to excellent to commended, and they've done nothing different. Nothing has changed, other than other schools have either risen or dropped in the metric. So it is important to remember that it's not like, it's not like things that you normally measure, which is, here's the benchmark, you either meet it or you don't. It is a floating scale for this.
Just want to quickly, Sean, this is very important and worthwhile information for the community in general, especially for immigrant parents as well. Is it possible to request or information on our neighborhood community high school on this state school report card? For example, like GBN, GBS, Nutriol, Stevens, kind of.
You can go to the Illinois School Report Card and look up this exact same data for any school in the state of Illinois. You can literally go and put in Glenbrook South and pull up Glenbrook's information and.
Something like this simple as like this.
Well, actually, I don't have much in here in terms of. You can download a PDF of their school information by clicking at a location on that website. You get all of that information in a PDF file.
And let's focus for this for our report card right now. So, and that's going to be next month anyways. We can do something else. I shared a little bit, the SAT stuff I shared with Ma'am, get to some of that, because I had the Glenbrooks in there, for example.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Sean, for all of that. Ken, monthly update and FOIA requests?
Nine this month have been responded to or in the process of being applied to.
Okay, could I have a motion on items 7A through S, the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ginny, would you take the role?
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Could I have a motion on item eight, which is the Board of Education policies? This is a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. George?
There's been no changes to a second reading. If the policies are approved, I will file with the board regarding the succession of authority of procedure. And I have a draft copy here.
Great.
If it's approved.
Okay. Any questions or comments? We have gone over these at Policy Committee, and also there was a first reading. All right? If there's no questions, Ginny, would you take the role?
Iker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Have a motion on item nine, the summer school calendar fees.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
So in your packet, you have the dates of summer school for summer of 2023. And the school fees, summer school fees will remain the same. So if there's any questions on those, to entertain them.
So amount is the same as previous year, correct?
Yes, no change.
No change.
I'm sorry, you said for sessions one and two?
Yes, so last increase was 2017, so we've remained the same with fees.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Ginny, would you take the role?
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Second motion on item 10, this is the school calendar for 2023, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Sean, anything to note?
Sure, so a couple of points that align with some of the goals we've had at the district level for professional development. We've added four cuplets. We call them cuplets, because this block schedule, you have to think in two-day increments, throughout the school year with half-days. So students will be in school five hours that day, which is the minimum to declare a day of school. But we're going to use those afternoons to provide professional development. Not only did you start teachers, which you hear a lot of our focus on, but one place we've been trying to get better, and Mr. Daggers can speak about this, is also professional development for our support staff. We've been pretty light in that area. As a board, you know, you see sometimes some of the concerns that pop up around personnel issues. And we just want to make sure we're doing a really good job helping those individuals be the best they can be as part of our workforce as well. So Mr. Daggers has been working closely with the buildings to provide a really bolstered level of professional development for our support staff. This will give us that time, because otherwise, it's very difficult to have folks do that outside of their workday. Our support staff has a very.
Structured.
Structured, strict workday unlike our teaching staff. The other piece of this, which you may get questions about, on one of those half-days, we're going to use the half-day we used to use for a single parent-teacher conference. Many districts around us have eliminated that single evening. We are suggesting that we do the same, simply because our expectations for communication have changed drastically since we used to do parent-teacher conferences, conference evenings. Our teachers communicate more often than they ever did in the past with our students, as well as in different modes. Email. From the pandemic, we continue to meet with parents through Puma Meet. And that's ongoing ubiquitous. That's not a special night in October in the evening. The other thing that that helps us to address, too, is we used to always have a half-day as part of a payback for that evening to staff. So that'll eliminate that. However, we feel, we work with the association on this. They're mostly in agreement. We let them kind of really lead the way on this to say, hey, is this something you feel you still need? Most of that group said, no, we really work hard to communicate with parents. And so we felt this was an appropriate move to make.
And as far as communicating that to parents, so that.
We've already prepared a piece that'll go out tomorrow or Wednesday that shares some of the key dates from the calendar, winter break, spring break, things of that nature.
And the conference parent. Eliminating the.
And it also explains in detail the reasons behind assuring parents that at any point in time that they would like to speak with a teacher, that that's an easy thing for us to do and making sure that, again, we're not losing anything in this, just a different way.
Okay. And then these half-days that you're talking about, the teacher and staff professional development days, they're kind of spread across the calendar.
Yeah, so we spread them out throughout the calendar to kind of give that balance to the year, and also our semester balance, our quarter balance, for the sake of teacher planning, but also for follow-up. That way, we can keep some professional development that we want to keep going all year long, all year long. So that was the design of that, that we worked with the teachers on.
How is our experience related to winter vacation starts December 25 or close to Christmas time compared to before? You know, many years ago, we did like little much mean a time.
We do the finals before.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we wrap up the semester prior to winter break. So winter break is a full winter break for students. That aligns with our partner districts as well, as does our spring break. We work hand-in-hand on that, so that parents don't find themselves in difficult situations between the high school and the elementary.
So I was going to say, so spring break vacation time is similar to our neighborhood community.
Okay.
I have just one question. You know, although I really get, I understand why we're doing it, and I think it's a good use of time. But, you know, I just want to throw out the things that I think we're missing when we don't have a parent-teacher conference. I just remember going and through the day of my student's schedule, and what I, they were like intangible things, you know, when you, like, I went to Main South for my kids' parent-teacher conferences, right? And what I would realize is that, oh my God, look what these kids have to go, all the way from the PA wing to the third floor.
Well, that's Meet the Teacher Night.
Oh, is that still? Okay, that's still going on then?
Now, this is the parent-teacher conference night in October.
Oh, so that's like, because I think that was valuable?
Yeah, no, we'll still be doing Meet the Teacher Night.
Okay, all right.
Fest the name.
All right, good.
I agree. That's a great night for parents to.
Yeah, that's not going away.
Okay, oh, good.
All right.
All right, good. I'm glad that you started with that.
Okay, that's, okay. So if there's no other questions on a school calendar, could, Ginny, would you take the role?
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Have a motion on item 11.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mary?
I only want to make one comment, and that is, we just got late last week the 21 information, so that when I publish the truth in taxation, I will compare it against the draft information that they said instead of the estimate that I provided in the board packet.
Okay.
That is it. They're fairly close. You will also get a sheet that shows you the difference. You'll also get a sheet that shows you the difference.
Okay. All right, any questions on this? Okay, Ginny?
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Could I have a motion on item 12A?
So moved.
Second.
Mary?
Yeah, so as indicated, we opened the bid packages for bid package five. The first is the wood floor refinishing in the field house at Main East. We had seven bidders. And we had three bidders with the lowest being consolidated. And we, they have been fully scope reviewed and we recommend that the board award the contract to Consolidated Flooring of Chicago.
Okay, any questions? Okay, would you take the role?
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Could I have a motion on item 12B, Mechanical Systems, HVAC work at Maine South?
So moved.
Okay, there we go.
For the HVAC work, we had multiple bidders. As you recall, this bid, we received no interest in anybody wanting to hold their price for over a year. So we re-bid this in October. Had a wide range of coverage and we recommend after fully scope reviewing that the contract be awarded to Flow Tech Mechanical Systems.
This is a big, have we worked with them before?
We've worked with them before they were awarded the package to A at Maine South for the cafeteria work.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Okay, hearing none. Would you take the role?
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Could I have a motion on item 12C? This is cybersecurity.
So moved.
Second.
Doc?
So this is an agreement with a company called F R Secure to assess our risks. So to go through our risk assessment exercise, help us develop a plan by which to address those risks and also to cover the table stakes that we need to work with in order to secure the district. They'll also be conducting penetration tests. And what that means is they're actively going to try to exploit any security flaws that they find. They're not gonna do this to obviously attack us, but at least share with us where our vulnerabilities are and what we need to do to, to address those vulnerabilities.
Important, very important. Any questions?
Are we talking about like physical vulnerabilities or cyber vul- or both?
Cyber vulnerabilities for the most part, but there are, there are also physical components to that. So like for example, our data closets, you know, is it easy for people to get into those? They won't be testing to that extent, but they will be testing our systems.
Any other questions? Ginny, would you take the role?
Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Could I have a motion on items 12D and E? We'll take them together.
So moved.
Second.
Mary?
Hey, D is a contract amendment. Quest worked with the state of Illinois to ensure that sales tax did not have to be collected and remitted. The state of Illinois and their attorneys worked on this amendment that clarifies basically that they are working on our behalf for serving food to students with the adoption of this amendment. It just reiterates our ongoing practice of not charging kids sales tax and having to remit that. It's been reviewed by our legal counsel as well.
And the satellite, oh, go ahead, you can ask on that.
Just very quick related to just since you mentioned sales tax. Yeah, I do see a, some of the contract, the, the proposals or the invoice that they, the businesses that has been sent and delivered to the pepper constructions, some of the construction targets and so on. I see some of them has a sales tax and whatever it meant. But I think it was B to B or taxes exempt from related to that particular. Do they?
The only, the only item that we are required to pay sales tax on is items that go into temporary construction, such as plywood. We challenged that and went to our own legal counsel who said, yes, on temporary contraction, you are required to pay sales tax. But every other contract, there is not sales tax. We do not require employees if they pay sales tax.
Okay, but I thought the business who supplying the product to A, I guess peppers or to us, they should have their own sales tax exemption.
No, so they're, they, they rely on our sales tax. So frequently we are required to provide businesses our sales tax exemption and then they will not charge a sales tax. Anybody who is contracting like, like Quest, who is buying product on our behalf, is allowed to maintain our sales tax exemption.
So we are all aware of that anyway, truly aware.
Okay, and then the satellite location?
Satellite location, Quest was looking for a very short term for the end, for second semester. They picked up an elementary district in Beach Park. We have the capacity at Maine South for them to provide the satellite of that while they look for a more permanent location closer to Beach Park. And in exchange for that satellite, they will give us $1,500 a month.
Okay, you straightforward? All right, any questions? Okay, hearing none, take the role.
Lee?
Aye.
Co- Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Could I have a motion on item 13, approval of the tuition cost per pupil?
So moved.
Second.
This is a calculation that is done as part of the audit and as part of the AFR. This year it increased by 5.7%. Our allowable expenditures went up by 4.8% and our average daily attendance decreased by 0.5. We currently have zero students who, and I, and I used, I can't remember the term I used, but we have one student who had to pay because they, their 30-day pre-exemption expired and they didn't move in until 45 days. So they had to give us a little bit of prorated tuition. But no one is scheduled to give us the full year of tuition.
Okay. All right.
I'm just confused just a bit. So 122,000?
No, no, that was a typo.
Thank you.
There was a new, there was a new, a new agenda that came out. It's 22,000.
Thank you.
I'm trying. I'm looking to be all, so sorry.
Thank you for catching that, yeah, okay.
Thank you, I, I thought.
Okay, hearing no other questions? Would you take the role?
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Okay, item 14 is just calendar items. I don't know if there's any changes to that. We don't have to vote on that. Any public comments? Okay. Could I have a motion to go into closed session for purposes of student personnel, review of closed session minutes, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees and probable imminent or pending litigation?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ginny?
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye, okay. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, take the role, please.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Could I have a motion on item 18, A through G as appended?
So moved.
Second.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.